Perfect.
Jared's nicely assembled.
It's one o'clock. We have the regular city commission meeting on Tuesday, April 18th. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum? It is Commissioner Andrew's turn to do the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow.
Father, we come to this day, we are so grateful to be gathered here today, and Father, we ask you to help us to do your work. We thank you for your leadership and your guidance, Father, in our community, and thank you for the blessing that you have caused not only on Garden City, but also this whole region. Father, thank you for moving mildly, Father, to protect our first responders, and Father, we are so grateful for all that you're doing. And we are thankful, Father, for an increased rainfall and a beautiful spring. We give you glory and honor and ask for your wisdom. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And then next on the agenda is the April 4th Commission Minutes, Meeting Minutes. Any changes? I didn't see any. No stand as approved, as presented. Item five, this is public comment. This is a time where anybody from the community can come forward and comment on any item that is not on the agenda. We give you five minutes, and please state your name when you do come forward. Okay, item six.
Okay, I'm ready for item six A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request to allow the mayor to proclaim May 4th, 2023, as International Firefighters' Day in Garden City, Kansas. Chief?
Good afternoon, mayors.
Once mayor, always mayor, you know.
International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on May 4th. Communities, youth who have been member past firefighters who lost their lives in the line of duty will serve in their communities or who have dedicated their lives to protecting the safety of assault. At the same time, it's the day to show support and appreciation for firefighters worldwide who continue to protect us so well throughout the year. The Garden City Fire Department was formally organized in 1887 and has proudly served the community ever since. We are continuing to watch Garden City grow and thrive just as our department has, while maintaining our mission to assist the public in the protection of life and property. We ask that you approach your requests to proclaim May 4th, 2023, as International Firefighters' Day in Garden City, as a way to show gratitude and appreciation of the services of our firefighters in our community.
Will there be an event for, are you guys having something on that day where the mayor can come and present? Okay. There you go. All right. Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
I move to approve allowing the mayor to proclaim May 4th, 2023, as International Firefighters' Day in Garden City, Kansas.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Have to get back into the groove.
That's right.
Sure, we can do that.
We're going to miss you someone on the gut one shift.
Okay.
All right, we're ready for item six B. The governing body is asked to consider the following requests from Bonnie McClure, Executive Director of Beef Empire Days Incorporated. Number one, waiver of the $2,500 carnival deposit fee and $300 per day, daily fees from May 19th to May 28th, 2023. Number two, to allow under section 6-335 and 6-133 to possession, consumption, and sale of cereal malt beverages or alcoholic liquors on the sidewalks, streets, and public park area, specifically Stevens Park, on Saturday, June 3rd, 2023, from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. for Beef Beer and Boots. Number three, waiver of signed code ordinance to place a banner at Stevens Park. And background on this is that these requests are consistent to previous years.
I'm trying to make it consistent.
There you go.
Nobody's built a reputation as bad as mine. I want to again tell you that we're on the radar for number 55.
Wow.
Beef Empire Days. This event will be, as always, trying to carry out our mission of celebrating the beef industry and all affiliated industries and the impact that it has on our communities, and also to educate people on the beef industry and nutrition values and all of those things. Not a lot of changes to our event schedule. We're just trying to juke up some of those and make them a little bit more exciting, more fun. The last time I was here, I told you we were working on chuck wagons. We've got some really new things. We're actually going to have some chuck wagons here this year.
Awesome.
But we've got some fun things. Plus, that chuck wagon meal will be free this year.
Oh.
So we're trying to bring more people into the fold to enjoy beef with us. The other thing I would like to say before I forget, because I did last year, this is a formal invitation for you to be at the front of our parade. I will interview, so you don't even have to do that. You have to put on your cowboy hat and show up then.
There you go.
So we enjoy that. We are asking for a waiver on the carnival, as we have in the past. The beer garden is being done by one of our partners with Beef Beer and Boots because downtown had other things that they really didn't want to get involved this year. We're going to keep it within an area within the park. Originally, we kind of were going to make it bigger, but we're not. We're going to keep it within the area of the park. But it will be more aligned with food trucks. So the food trucks will start at noon, beer garden will start at 2:00, and then we'll go through the early evening hours. The other is finding John Pond Stevens Park. Again, there's nothing really unusual about these requests.
Any questions?
We appreciate you coming and in person being here. That makes a difference, and it's really, we're excited about this year for you, and so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have a great reputation, so I mean Beef Empire Days is incredible. That's okay. Beef Empire Days is incredible, and it brings so much, so much to our community, so we really appreciate all you do.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
It was your first year. It's okay.
Yeah, I've been on the job, what, two weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was good. I move that we approve the, all three of the requests from Bonnie McClure, Executive Director of Beef Empire Days.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
We'll see you then. Thank you.
Item six C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve event requests from Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo for Boo at the Zoo 2023. Christie?
And me. As Derek said before you, is Boo at the Zoo. The chosen date, if approved for that, is October 21st. This will be the Friends of the Zoo's 28th year hosting this. Are we in 55? 55 days, but we'll get there. So it's 28. The request is to close on that day so that we can set up, because there's lots of stuff going on, open later to attendees, also to charge a fee for those attendees. There is a small fiscal impact to closing that day to the gate. There is a little bit of overtime for staff in helping with the event, but overall, with the proceeds from the event going to benefit the zoo, it's a win. Jessica's here to answer some questions for you. Your alternatives are to approve the request to close the zoo for the day, for event setup, to charge attendees an admission fee. Of course, you can modify those requests, or you can deny those.
Yeah, it's always a good event. When I was reading through the information, you said to charge a fee, but I didn't see that anywhere in any of the information. How much are we charging to get into the event?
So if you buy it early to get the early pass, it's sold at Ward's or El Dorado and a lot of other places at the zoo. That's going to be $5 for general admission, ages two and under is free. If you're coming at the gate, it's going to be $10, again, two and under is free. If you are a member and want to purchase a skeleton key pass, those include the, no line, it's kind of like the Disney pass.
Oh, yeah.
$15 for children ages three to 12, to another, free, and $20 for adults over 13.
Okay.
Yeah, October seems really far away, but this is, and I'm really, thanks for sharing how much. This is a really, I mean, I knew it made a lot of income. I did not realize that amount, the $30,000. So this is really, and the work, I mean, there's lines, oh, more than, well, the line's out the door. I mean, it's clear around everywhere, so it's a really great event. Thank you.
We did get a lot of press last year when Coca-Cola came, and they had their little VW bus, photo shoot, posting it on their website and all kinds of stuff. Everybody got a.
National attention.
It was like a photo booth, but everybody got, everybody got pictures.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the request to close the zoo for the day of the event and set up and to charge of attendees an admission fee.
There's been a motion.
Second.
There's a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. You're welcome.
Item 16. The governing body is asked to consider and approve event requests from the Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo for the Jungle Run 2023.
We just figured we'd stay.
There you go.
So as Derek said before you, the event request related to the Jungle Run Automobile Show for 2023. This will be the sixth?
Eighth.
Eighth, sorry. Eighth vendor. And it's on July 8th. It is scheduled to coincide with the flea market festival hosted by the historic museum. So we have a lot of stuff going on at the zoo that day. But the request before you is that the Friends may charge a fee for those who enter into the event, so it's anybody who brings a vehicle. Those who are coming to the zoo can come as usual. So no closing the zoo or anything, just a participant's fee for those who bring the vehicle in. This is all done during the day, so there's really no overtime or anything else that affects the zoo staff. So you can approve the request for an entry fee, or of course, you can deny that.
And again, as I read through the material, the request, or how much is the fee? Because we have to approve that, but I didn't see a fee anywhere.
So if you pre-register, so when we send registrations out, we give you until the date before the event to pre-register. That kind of helps us set things up as far as kitty bags, so on and so forth, and you get a better kitty bag if you pre-register. Also, we have a, so it's $25 if you pre-register. But you can still come the day of, it's just $5 more, and pay the show. And we'll let you register all day long.
Okay, thank you.
I am moved that we approve the request to charge participants an entry fee.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six E. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the request to close drive-through access early for Lee Richardson Zoo's Strides for Snow Leopards Event. Listen.
All right, this is a new event, and we are going to, if we can close the drive-through an hour and a half early, so that we can get the vehicles cleared, in hopes that we have a lot of participation with people walking and get out of my staff. So you are going to request the director to close at 4:30 on June 4th, 2023, and of course, you can approve that or deny.
Yeah, the zoo is an absolutely incredible place to walk, and I mean, it's really beautiful. So I, these kind of activities like this, I really appreciate, and so thanks for, I mean, I know that you've got your tried and true, and then so that's great, but trying some new things, I really appreciate that.
So entertain a motion on this item, then?
Move to approve the request to close the drive-through to vehicles at 4:30 for Strides for Snow Leopards on June 4th, 2023.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Moving on to item seven, Report of the City Manager. Item 7A, Congratulations to City Clerk Ceylin Hurtado on the occasion of her receiving the Master Municipal Clerk Designation from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. As shown in the attached letter from the Vice President of the Kansas City Clerk Municipal Finance Officers Association, the designation of Master Municipal Clerk is achieved only after a city clerk completes an in-depth series of professional education programs on a variety of municipal government topics, as well as having completed a program of professional and social contribution. City Clerk Hurtado is highly respected in this organization and community, as well as the city clerk profession, as evidenced by past awards and leadership positions she has held on association boards. Her MMC designation formalizes what so many in Garden City and around the state of Kansas already know. Ceylin Hurtado is a fantastic city clerk and is a master of her craft. Congratulations, Ceylin.
I think we should probably get a photo with her, don't you think?
Yep.
Okay.
If there's exclamation marks in the agenda, we probably need to take a photo.
Yeah, definitely. Because she's fantastic. Good? All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Good job.
I did want to just, I know Ceylin does so much for, not only for our organization here, but she does a lot for the community, and I, you know, I watch her leadership in all the different organizations that she participates in, and when you have Ceylin in your organization or participating with you, let me tell you what, she brings a lot of people with her. So one example is in that way, and I know that, I mean, every year she does an incredible job for them, but I think there's so many places that she touches within our city, and so not only, I know this is a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort, and so I know it's taken lots of years and time, and so, but we are so proud, not only of the accomplishment, but proud that you are our city clerk here. And I also wanted to say that, you know, the way that you are respected throughout the state, and how many people call and get advice from you, you're kind of the head boo-bah, the poo-bah, doodah, whatever, so that when people need help, I mean, you're the person they call, and so that you're here in Garden City, and we want you to stay forever, so that you're here in Garden City really makes a difference to us. So I just wanted to say thank you again, so.
Do you want to say anything? I mean, I was going to have comments at the end, but I was just going to, we can do it now. I just want to congratulate you on your success and what you do for the city and not, or for the city of Garden City, but also for the community. Like Commissioner Andrew said, all the committees that you're on, you really bring a fire to, and passion to what you do, and you really have helped our community be a better place. So thank you for all that you do, and a great award.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we might debate this in for allowing you to stay in the hall. Thank you.
You're good?
Item 7B, Congratulations to the city of Garden City on the occasion of receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for 2021. The certificate?
Good afternoon. I'll speak on this just a little bit. We've done this kind of year after year. The city has continued to receive this award. And I just want to kind of throw out some thanks and some gratitude to those who really put this together. The Service of Finance Department does a great job. There's a lot of staff work that goes into this. Our audit is really one week in February on the calendar, but it starts year-end and it goes till June. And so it's a lot of work for the city staff around the city that we go track down information on or hunting things. They do a great job of getting back information promptly. Our auditors help tremendously with the ACI department. So it's a, it's a big conglomerate of group of people who put effort into this. But it speaks to us that the 27th consecutive year the city has received this award. The rules change, the requirements change, these things get updated, there's specific hoops you gotta jump through that you had to. And the city has done a good job of staying ahead of the game with that, making sure we continue to receive this award. And so we'll continue to apply for this and hopefully continue that trend going. But we're the only city west of Wish Park in Kansas that received this award. So props to everybody for their work, and we'll continue to keep striving for this level of excellence.
I agree. You know, 27 years, that's a long time, and especially to all your staff and your leadership in that department, but also to the staff that do an outstanding job to keep this award going in our community.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Jared, for mentioning all the other people who make up that, not only the awards, because it is, it's a team effort here, so great job.
Good job.
Items seven through G are staff reports. Does the governing body have any questions for staff?
Any questions?
No, I did speak with Chief Ursick about, I mean, I wasn't really familiar with all of the, where the different sectors were, or the divisions were, and so I, he's going to include a map next time, but I thought that would be really interesting. I did see, he presented to the county commission, and I didn't realize, you know, Finney County is huge, and really, they cover a huge area, so I, no, I thought the report was really well done. I just wanted to make sure. I really appreciate that addition of that map and letting us know where those sections.
I enjoyed the media report. Very well put together. And of course, the employments are on track for hopefully another record, so.
Good job.
Yeah, when you say the media report, a lot of those media things that we do, I am not on. I mean, so I feel really bad, because I like Twitter and all the other stuff. I mean, I have an account. I don't use it at all, but I do think that's really interesting, and then just the way, I really appreciate the idea. And when you went through the report, I really did appreciate the ways that you're learning from it, and then what you're doing to move forward. So I thought that was really beneficial for me to know what's next, so thank you.
Again, a team effort.
Yeah.
Department working together and making us look successful and good, so. All right, moving on.
Okay. Item number eight, Meetings of Note. Please see the list of meetings that are available. If you guys would like to RSVP, please do so through the city clerk's office. And we're ready for item number nine A, Consideration of Appropriation Ordinance, and if approved, it'd be appropriation ordinance number 2577-2023A.
I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2577-2023A.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10A is a public hearing set for 1:30 p.m. That includes Bond Counsel Mary Carson, so we're going to head and move forward to new business items. She's also on the call for 12A, so we'll move to 12B.
Okay.
Item 12B, The Governing Body is Asked to Consider and Approve a Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Garden City and the Garden City Community College. Chief?
Just a little back four. Good afternoon, again. The Garden City Fire Department did an organizational study done in late 2021, came up in total of 120 recommendations. And the bottom report provided by McGrath acknowledged the partnership that GCFT has with the Garden City Community College, and is beneficial to the department. For the McGrath recommended that the formal memorandum of understanding be presented to formalize the partnership between GCFT and GCCC relating to classroom and in particular, practical evaluations. The primary focus of the MOU is to ensure that the GCFT personnel are able to successfully achieve the required training hours to maintain our insurance safety out training, and on GCFT personnel help fireside students train. Additionally, the partnership includes an internship program with fireside students, allowing them to earn college credits while getting on the job train. The internship has proved to be a valuable asset to the GCFT and provided us with opportunity to hire multiple qualified fighters. All of the requests made during the GCFT organizational study, MOU is also used to address the relationship between Garden City Police Department and these training facility for officers. The alternatives are approved, the governing body may approve, and all address the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the City of Garden City and the Garden City Community College. Alternative two, the governing body may not approve the memorandum of understanding improvised staff direction. Staff records alternative one.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item, then?
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a MOU between the City Garden City and Garden City Community College.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thanks, chief.
Item 12C, The Governing Body is Asked to Consider and Approve Appointments to the Art Grant Committee. The Art Grant Committee meets annually to make recommendations to the governing body regarding annual arts grants. The committee is comprised of three at-large positions. Two members, Shauna Dill and Melissa Gallegos, have been on the committee since 2014, and the third member, Troy Nanega, has been on the committee since 2017. In 2022, both Ms. Dill and Ms. Gallegos were appointed to a one-year extension ending on December 31st, 2022. Staff is recommending another year extension so that recommendation can be made regarding the 2023 funding requests. After those recommendations are made, staff will promote the upcoming openings to the committee and bring back recommendations for regular appointments with appropriately staggered terms. Staff appreciates the time that all three committee members have given over the past several years to make recommendations and promote arts throughout Garden City. So there's two alternatives for the governing body to choose from. Alternative number one, the governing body may appoint Shauna Dill and Melissa Gallegos to a term ending on December 31st, 2023, and direct staff to bring back a proposal to have regularly staggered terms by the end of 2023. And number two, the governing body may not appoint Shauna Dill and Melissa Gallegos to a term ending on December 31st, 2023, and direct staff as appropriate. It is staff's recommendation that the governing body appoint Shauna Dill and Melissa Gallegos to a term ending on December 31st, 2023, and direct staff to bring back a proposal to have regularly staggered terms by the end of 2023, and there is no fiscal impact. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I do want to say thank you. I didn't realize how long they had served. So this is like, you sometimes think you, you're doing a service, and then Melissa Gallegos and then Shauna Dill, thanks so much for that, since 2014, it's incredible, and Troy Nanega being on the committee since 2017, so you can tell these are dedicated people. So I would, I agree that extending that to the December 31st, so I would move that we appoint Shauna Dill and Melissa Gallegos to a term ending on December 31st, 2023, and direct staff to bring back a proposal to have regularly staggered terms by the end of 2023, hopefully also getting additional members, so.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Okay, I think we might have time for one more.
We can squeeze it in if we're quick.
12D, The Governing Body is Asked to Consider and Deny the Proposal from GLMB Architecture to Remodel the Law Enforcement Center. In 2019, the Garden City Police Department had an organizational study done by McGrath Consulting Group to identify workspace and future growth needs. This led to the acquisition and remodel of the facility at 310 North 7th Street where Municipal Court and Evidence Storage are now located. City and County Commissions identified a plan to repossess the created space within the law enforcement center to better fit the needs of both organizations. At the August 16th, 2022 City Commission meeting, the governing body approved a proposal from GLMB Architecture for design-built services to remodel the LEC with a budget of $360,000. After numerous project design meetings, facility walkthroughs, and assessments, GLMB submitted the budget proposal with a base proposal of $650,763 and a complete project proposal of $817,092, which represented $290,763 over budget for the base bid and $457,092 over budget for the complete project bid. In conversations with county administration, it is staff's understanding that the county will be conducting a facility assessment for the LEC in 2023. It is staff's recommendation to delay this project until after the county's facility assessment is completed due to the likelihood the assessment will identify significant building repair and/or system replacements. There are three alternatives for the governing body to choose from. Alternative number one is the governing body may deny the proposal from GLMB Architecture to remodel the law enforcement center. Alternative number two, the governing body may approve the proposal from GLMB Architecture to remodel the law enforcement center. And alternative number three, the governing body may give staff further direction. It is staff's recommendation the governing body deny the proposal from GLMB Architecture to remodel the law enforcement center. And the fiscal note on this project is that the GCPD had allocated $150,000 in their GLL count building repairs, which transferred to fund 005 at the end of 2022. The additional $210,000 would have come out of the community trust reserve and be repaid by the GCPD over three years in addition to what they are repaying. by the GCPD over three years in addition to what they are repaying for the municipal court and evidence building. Chief, I would be happy to answer any questions.
So just, I want to understand, so the LEC is owned by the county and we act as renting or we share the space to an agreement or?
Yes, we are renting the space from the county.
So when I, so I guess, what's the timeline on their study to get this done?
Right.
Because I know we've moved out, we're trying to get into that space, so what's their timeline and where does that put us? Do they let us know?
Right, so currently, we had conversations with county administration, they're going to conduct the assessment in 2023, and we'll have follow-up conversations with them after this meeting as well to kind of get a timeline for when that assessment's going to be done. Exactly. And we, we're not moved out of that space, there was a space opened when municipal clerk or municipal court and evidence storage moved over to the old Telegram building.
I got to stop you because we've got a 1:30, it is 1:30, so we'll get back to this.
Right.
We need to move back to item 10A for a 1:30 public hearing.
Item 10A, public hearing for the governing body to consider and approve the ordinance adopting the redevelopment project plan related to the tax increment financing TIF request, and if approved, it would be ordinance number 2957-2023. So background on this, on September 20, 2022, the city commission authorized a memorandum of understanding with the Woodmoc Company that outlined the anticipated project costs along with anticipated public contributions, including, not limited to, tax increment financing, community improvement district, retailer Saks tax exemption through industrial revenue bonds, other city incentives, and special obligation bonds. There have already been a number of items before the governing body related to the development and related incentives. The action before the city commission today is to hold a public hearing to consider adoption of a redevelopment project plan related to the TIF request as outlined in the ordinance. The ordinance would also approve the development agreement as substantially complete. If approved, it would allow the execution for the agreement which outlines the specific terms of both the TIF and the CID. The city's bond counsel, Mary Carson, has assisted in the creation of the proposed ordinance and subsequent development agreement. The ordinance has also been reviewed and approved by the developer. So there's two alternatives on this project. The governing body may approve the ordinance approving and adopting a redevelopment project plan for the Garden City Plaza LLC redevelopment district in the city of Garden City, Kansas, and approving related documents. And number two, the governing body may not approve the ordinance. It is staff's recommendation that the governing body approves the ordinance approving and adopting a redevelopment project plan for the Garden City Plaza LLC redevelopment district in the city of Garden City, Kansas, and approving related documents. Fiscal note on this, outside the fiscal impact of the use of the newly created property tax increment to repay eligible infrastructure costs and revenue generated by the developer levying an additional sales tax increment for the same, the fiscal impact for the developer is up to $200,000 that will be paid from the general fund. The payments would incur in 100,000 increments at the time a certificate of occupancy is issued for the two national chain retail stores. The payment may also be used to help offset city charges. And we have bond counsel Mary Carson joining us for the Zoom.
Good afternoon. I guess this is the last step in, you know, getting this TIF project fully created, there's a number, as you know, lengthy sort of statutory process that you're at the end of finally. So at this point, what you need to do is open a public hearing on approving the project plan, and then we can move on after that to the ordinance.
I guess I'll open the, for, I thought I opened it, but that's okay. You know, you get a little rusty when you haven't done this for a while. I've opened for public comment, if there's any public comment for the public meeting for the open. No comment? I'll close the public meeting then for comment. Any other comments, Mary?
No, I don't have to answer any questions about the ordinance. The ordinance is pre-brief that basically approves the project plan that the developers and the city prepared, and which has been signed off by the planning commission as well. And then it approves in substantially the form that you have at today, the development agreement, but it authorizes the mayor to execute, mayor and the city could execute changes as it are approved by council. We expect we'll have that done in probably a few weeks. And there's a provision in the ordinance that will not be published or become effective until the development agreement is in final form. I think it's pretty close, it's just we didn't have it pinned down quite enough to go ahead, just have it signed by today, so. And the development agreement covers the, both the distribution of the TIF revenues, the CIDs, and all of the other issues that are, you know, incentives that you've offered to the project, describes the project in pretty close detail.
So like you said, this was, is the final step in the process, then?
Yeah, there'll be some things we need to submit to the county, but I guess this is the last step that the city commission needs to take to do this, and then we'll ultimately have an execution of the development agreement, should be ready to go.
Any questions from the commission? Entertain a motion on ordinance 2957-2023.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2957-2023, and ordinance approving and adopting a redevelopment project plan for the Garden City Plaza LLC redevelopment district in the city of Garden City, Kansas, and approving related documents.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That passed.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mary, you're going to stay on for the next item, correct?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep. Okay. Well, since Mary's going to be on the next item, the Zoom call, we'll go ahead and move on forward to that one. So item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve authorizing the mayor to sign the consent and subordination agreement related to the city's taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series A 2022 issued in December of 2022 on behalf of Providence Ethical Investments. On December 6, 2022, the city commission authorized issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the Providence Ethical Investments LLC to construct a medical office building generally located at 2301 East Mary Street. The consent and subordination agreement, the agreement is required by the U.S. Small Business Administration in connection with an SBA adventure that will permanently finance a portion of the project. If approved, the agreement will be filed with the Register of Deeds. The city's bond counsel, Mary Carson, has been working with the other properties, Security Bank of Kansas City's trustee, Providence Ethical Investments, the tenant, and the U.S. Small Business Administration's lender on the agreement. There are two alternatives for the governing body to choose from. The governing body may approve authorizing the mayor to sign the consent and subordination agreement between the city of Garden City, Security Bank of Kansas City, Providence Ethical Investments, and the U.S. Small Business Administration, and the governing body may not approve authorizing the mayor to sign the consent and subordination agreement between the city of Garden City, Security Bank of Kansas City, Providence Ethical Investments, and the U.S. Small Business Administration and provide staff with alternate direction. It is staff's recommendation that the governing body approve authorizing the mayor to sign the consent and subordination agreement between the city of Garden City, Security Bank of Kansas City, Providence Ethical Investments, and the U.S. Small Business Administration. There is no cost to the city for this action, the city has no responsibility for repayment of any obligation under the IRB. Mary's still on the call to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commission?
Well, I just had a question. So, so Mary, why does this need to go through this kind of a process? I was just curious about, you know, we've seen other buildings go up with, and is it because of the people involved in the building?
What happened was, we did that industrial revenue bond issue basically to grant the incentives that you agreed to grant to the project, and so we kind of have to do that. And at the time we did that, we didn't know that SBA financing was part of this project. Had we known that, we probably would have closed, closed both of them at the same time or closed two of it, and then we wouldn't have had to do this. But since we've already closed on the issue, the city's interest is basically subordinate to the loan, the construction loan, and so what we're doing now is, since SBA is also part of that, is just indicating that, that the city's interest with respect to the IRB will be subordinate to the SBA as well. The tenant purchased their own bonds, and the lease agreement anticipated that we would perhaps need to subordinate to future mortgages.
No, that makes sense. I appreciate that, thank you, so.
Yeah, there are questions? Entertain a motion on this item, then?
I move to approve mayor to sign a consent and subordination agreement between the city of Garden City, Security Bank of Kansas City, Providence Ethical Investments, and the U.S. Small Business Administration.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that item, motion? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks, Mary.
Take care.
All right. Moving back to 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and deny the proposal from GLMV Architecture to remodel the law enforcement center. You guys had some questions?
Yeah, I appreciate that, like, you know, Commissioner Sussin talked about a timeline, because when they say 2023, and I know that the space, that you already had plans for the space, I mean, I'm concerned about, so the obligation that the county has as far as to, you know, as to a tenant, if we are the tenant, you know, the obligation they have to complete that timeline, and then also the repairs and those kind of things. There's been a lot of issues with the building for years, so what, in our position, how are we going to make sure that this is moving forward so that either we can use the space that we've been allocated, you know, and that we're paying for, or else, you know, make a different plan? So that's, I guess my concern is making sure that there is a, I mean, a pretty tight timeline, and if they, whatever they identify, that those repairs or whatever they're going to do with the building is made known pretty quickly, because again, this is, the municipal court building has been out of there almost a year, two years now. And so, I mean, that's my concern, again, without any type of timeline or knowing, I mean, I'm not saying that we shouldn't deny that, but I deny the request, but there has already been a lot of work put into this, so I mean, is this work all going to go for naught, so it's no longer going to be valuable, and then GNLV is going to totally start over with, so that's, I'm trying to figure out that, so.
So with the amount of the investment that we were about to invest in the LEC through this remodel, we definitely wanted to have these conversations with the county to kind of see what their timeline was, and I think we'll get a lot of those answers once their facility assessment is completed. However, we want to make sure we get a firm window on when that's going to take place. So, yeah, we're ongoing conversations with the county, and hopefully we'll get that answer to you soon.
Any other questions?
No.
It was just interesting how far over budget, I mean, were we, I mean, we're pretty good at budgeting, but how far it was over, and was that just because of the, why was it that far over, I guess, is what I'm asking?
From talking with Conco, I think it was a combination of just a bunch of material costs being higher than anticipated from when our initial conversations with them. And then, as you see, the $650,000 was over half of our budget, but the $817,000 was with the alternatives included.
Okay.
So I think it was just a combination of a bunch of different factors.
So, I know we've, we've really planned to move a lot of our police force into that area to alleviate some, I guess, we're really cramped for space, so how does that put our department? I mean, I know you'll probably work through it, but you're still cramped for space.
We're still cramped for space. That, basically, was allocated with the district, old district courtroom and the old municipal courtroom was going to be, become the detective or investigation division and the squadron. And then, part of the new agreement with the county was, our squadron was going to go for them to use this. So, still cramped, but like you said, we'll make it work.
Okay.
We're probably going to occupy some of that space just to alleviate some of the gravity of right now, it's just going to be centralized and do that for us right now.
Okay. Well, keep us informed on it, then. We'll need to entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we deny a proposal from GMLV Architecture remodel of law enforcement center.
There's been a motion and a second? Any discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thanks, chief.
We're ready for item 12E. The governing body is asked to consider and reappoint Police Chief Courtney Pruitt as the Garden City Law Enforcement Representative on the Community Corrections Adult Advisory Board for a two-year term from April 2023 to March 2025.
Entertain a motion on that item?
I'll approve their, I move to approve their reappointment.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
None.
Okay. Item F.
Review of the budget calendar for 2023 meetings, review of major issues and assumptions used to draft 2024 department budgets, review commission goals and strategies that were identified, and the city commission retreat in review of the 2023-2027 capital improvement program. Jared?
Here we go, everybody. Today's pretty simple, I just want to go over the calendar and access the main assumptions we're using in the budget. Kind of giving you a layout of the upcoming few months. Historically, we've split the budget across six or seven meetings with presenting all of the budget funds across five or six of those. We're consolidating that a little bit, so today we're talking about the assumptions of the calendar. The two first meeting in May will cover the debt service, special revenue funds, and internal service funds, so all of those will be in one meeting. We'll hit the highlights, so my intent is to run that documentation to you, let you have a chance to review it well ahead of time, so get that to you next week, and then we'll identify kind of those big things, the big ticket items, the swings, the things that are outside the realm of normal, just to make sure that we have a chance to discuss those. But a lot of those internal service funds and the special revenue funds are pretty routine, they kind of do the same thing every year. So that one will simplify a little bit, and then May 16 will cover all of the enterprise funds, so utilities, of course, the airport. We are making some assumptions in the property tax values to do this a little earlier than we normally do, so we'll have some, some revamp when we come back at the end, I'll kind of present, hey, now that we got the real numbers, here's what it is, but we feel like we've got pretty good assumptions for how to go forward on those. And then June 6 will hit the general fund, and so that we, pretty much every budget will be presented to you. That will give us a couple of months where we can have some discussions of making some adaptations, making some adjustments based on direction from the commission, as we finalize our final numbers from the county treasurer and the county clerk, we can kind of make that picture come clear, and then we'll come back and use those meetings in July and present the clear final picture, talk through what changes have been made, what adaptations were done, and then identify what that proposed earliest or no letting would be. At that point, we need to sign off if we're going to try to exceed that revenue neutral rate, submit that to county, and then we come back and go through the public hearing process and then off the budget. So a little bit different, just a little more consolidated in the past, kind of fitting all in one by kind of identity of the budget rather than stringing it out across based on timelines. Pros of that is it's a little more consolidated, cons is we don't have to clear picture at the end of June, July that we have out in the past, but I think we'll be pretty in close. Any questions about the timeline or anything else here?
Yeah, when I pulled the calendar up and I saw that May 2 with all, it's like, we're going to be here for a while, you know, but I think if you kind of give us an overview, that'll, that'll help, I mean, where we don't dig too in depth, you know, so, okay.
And there's a few funds, so I'll kind of hit on those a little bit more detail just to make sure it's something different and unique, but a lot of them really, especially if you sell this, you've seen them, they've been pretty, pretty much the same year over year. The function of them hasn't changed, and it might tick up and down a few thousand dollars, but some of those special parks and utilities and things like that are pretty, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
So have there been any changes in the legislature, they're going to impact, I know there's sales tax, there was a sales tax that I don't, I don't think the initiative made it out of committee, but I can't remember.
That one didn't change. There's some proposals that might impact, so kind of like, so, but nothing that's impacting us as far as our budget timeline or schedule, or what we anticipate, our property tax. The property tax evaluation increased, I think, 11% last year, was quite a spike above normal, and there's still some discussion about maybe setting some limits on that, but nothing that would impact us right now as far as what we have proposed and kind of afford with this year. And our, I'll get into it with our assumptions, but we estimated a property tax valuation increase of 3%, which has been pretty historically consistent, so if it ends up being higher than that, it's going to only lessen the pain of what we're expecting. Anything else on the calendar? So, if not, I'll jump in the, in the assumptions, I'll just kind of point out a couple of the main ticket assumptions we're using for this year. Like I said, for city valuation, we're estimating a 3% increase. Revenue's were kind of trending up, we're expecting those to be pretty consistent to last year with a slight increase, a conservative slight increase for things like sales tax and such. Utility costs were estimated a 3% increase over 2022, and then many state-type funding, liquor tax consumption, hybrid tax were projected to be the same, I found a little bit of a lot last year, just because you don't know how those trend. Overall inflation continues to tick up, so our expenses, we've budgeted for about 2% or 3% on average, those vary from 1% to 6%, we've kind of pulled out some of the big ticket swing out items, the fuel costs, 2022 are much higher than what we budgeted, so we are estimating just a 1% decrease over those 2022 actuals for our 23. those 2022 actuals for our 23 number, and a continued increase from there. We also, I'll point out for personal cost of benefits, historically, the city has used a 2% salary pool. The last couple of years, we've come back and added that extra 1% for that January 1 shift up. We've built that into the assumptions this year that we're going to start with that 3% salary pool. So going with the number we present, that would anticipate another similar 2% increase on a January 1 day as opposed to a 1% increase, which is kind of what we came up with with the bank plan initially, as well as the 2% increases during the employees' evaluation date. So that's kind of our starting line, because with the history and trend the last couple of years, we know that inflation rates still been high. That's been a hot ticket item across discussion boards and other cities passing, who's, what's everyone looking at as far as COLA, so we'll come back with some, hopefully some data that can kind of compile, here's what we're seeing as far as trends, how does the city compare, and have a discussion, but starting with that 3% rate at least keeps us on track of what we've done last year. Health insurance, right now, we budget it for 820 per month per employee. That has been consistent for many years. There's a discussion, we'll come back to the commission with as far as the mental wellness covers that we've added, to possibly increase that amount from the city's share due to the increasing cost of that quickly. Because of that, we used our blood funds, if you remember, on that. Well, that will get us probably through December if we sign off on the last of our funds to continue with that initiative, and then we have to make a decision of where does that come from going forward. So there might be some presentation of adjusting those figures, but that's what the initial budget will have. And then last page, really just talking through social security capers, KAF, these are all dictated, we just pocket them each year based on what they are, and those haven't changed too much. The rest of the description talks through kind of just explaining the funds and what they do, that's what we presented before. Also, reminders, you have the goals from this year's commission retreat. You have the CIP outline that was presented at that commission retreat, minus a few of the really large items that kind of spewed that up a little bit. And so we're still in process of the CIP review. We'll have a new document when that gets finalized to come back and kind of replace this one, but that'll be going through as we do the budget process. And then you also have the debt information. So we'll get you the packet early, hopefully next week, with the budgets that we'll be looking at the week after, so you guys will have time, and we'll stay ahead of you a week or two to make sure you've got time to review and highlight and have questions when we get to it. Hopefully this helps kind of speed the items along or just move the process a little bit more efficiently than we had in the past.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Good job.
Item 12G is consent agenda. There are currently two items on the consent agenda for the governing body's approval.
I move that we approve items G1 and 2.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Anything else? Go to commission reports, Commissioner Enro.
Well, this was a very efficient, see how easy it is when you don't have trouble in the room?
Yeah.
No, I know that the mayor and vice mayor are in Washington DC, we're excited about them being there and representing us, so I want to say thank you to them, and also that, we did miss them today. I do want to, I just remind, in case you didn't know, today's National Tax Day, so it did get extended, you know, February, or I mean, April 15th was always that, you know, the day of, we had to do that, and then because of all of the way the calendar fell, today is the National Tax Day. So if you didn't file your taxes, either file your taxes or get an extension and get that all done, so. I was helping my kids with some of their first-time filing taxes, and that's a kind of a grow-up, that's a, you know, that's kind of the adulting thing, you're like, well, why do I owe that, or why don't I owe, yes, so. It was, there were some hard lessons, so I can just hardly wait for the, as they go and get older. I also want to thank the city crews for the finishing up the citywide cleanup. It's really looking nice. I really appreciate that we've had a very mild spring and not, I mean, I know there's a couple of 90 days, but, you know, the city is looking really nice as you drive through. And I've been on many of the trails, and I'm going to tell you, the trail, the Tally Trail, the Pioneer Trail, the, I love running up in the cemetery, look incredible. It's just, this is a wonderful spring. So if you've not gotten outside, we've had so many nice days that people are going to think or kind of expect this for Western Kansas, but there have been some really nice days. Also, I just want to, I know that April 26 is National Walk at Work Day, and so I know that's something I really, walking is incredible, it's an incredible exercise, but it's also just a reminder that, you know, really to get outside and enjoy that before that, because 104 degrees are coming, so, and there's that. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of the, I know too, also to the Beef Empire Days, I know they're doing a really great job, but I, you know, I always forget how many events happen at the zoo, and, you know, they are really gracious about all the things that you do for our community. I mean, it's an incredible venue, and so, Kristi, I just, I appreciate you and your staff. I was thinking that today as I was listening to all of the different things that you get prepared for, and watering the lawn and preparing, I mean, but it looks, I was walking through the other day, it looks absolutely just gorgeous, so. I want to thank you for all that work, hard work. So with everything happening, just enjoy the rest of your spring.
Commissioner Dick?
A lot of things are, I was just going to say, just was said. Great to see all the events coming up, the stuff that happens at the zoo is good for our community. Beef Empire Days is always a big deal. Also, I was looking to see on the calendar, the Garden City Wind, I believe, is their first home game is June 1st, so look at that. Good job with the city crews, with the city cleanup and getting all that done. Also, with, thanks to getting out there and quick responses on some of those traffic poles, the lights that need to be done. And also, a very big thank you to Mike and his crew for putting in a red arrow stop arrow by target, because if you saw that temporary signal there, there was a red light, which was your left turn, the light down here was your go forward, so people were looking at this. So had some, had some community members see if we could fix that and went in and put in a red arrow so you know that if it's red pointing to the left, but it's still green down here, that means you're still good. And since that, since that's been changed, it's like, no, no issues at all. So Megan really appreciates that.
I have a good idea.
Yeah. Thanks, Celin, for all the stuff that she does, and then congratulations with the award. She helps us be very efficient as a commission and as a city, so thank you. And good job, Jared and team, for the award that we got there. Oh, and also, that media report was really good. That's probably not too many public people read that, but, I mean, it's, that's a lot of effort going into a report about how we're doing with our media and social media and stuff like that, so it was, looks like it took a lot of effort, and appreciate it. So, that's all I got.
Just really wanted to wrap up, you guys kind of covered everything. Just kind of nice to have the governor visit the community, you know, sometimes she gets a bad rap for not thinking we're part of Kansas, but came out and visited at the school districts, always nice to have the governor come in and visit the community, and hopefully she got to see some things that are other than just the school, but passing through the community. Yeah, great job on the spring cleanup, always nice to have that valuable service. You can always tell when we're getting close because you start seeing piles around everybody's yards. Other than that, oh, just a quick question. I noticed, when are we going to get the snow fence pulled up at the high school area? It's pretty much down, is there, is there, do we have a timeline on that?
Yes, commissioners, the spring cleanup, they're just finishing that up today, and then the, the, excuse me, the intent was to remove the snow fence, it started later late this afternoon tomorrow. Start by the high school, then we got some by some of the other schools as well, so they'll come down real soon. We think the snow's over.
We need snow, or just rain, we just take moisture, yeah.